...when she discovered gene editing was possible.
We had uncovered this just absolutely extraordinary molecule whose chemistry was going to probably change the world.
A decade later, how genetic tools are reshaping evolution. That's next time on the TED Radio Hour from NPR.
The TED Radio Hour comes your way Saturdays at 2:00.
If you are so inclined, I would ask that you stand and join us for the invocation. And please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have today with us Pastor Rodney Ayer, Pastor Rodney Anders. He's the music minister from Valleyworth Church. Pastor, if you'd like, please tell us a little bit about your church and your ministry. And then when you're ready, lead us in the invocation.
Well, we're located there, just off of 419 in Hanging Rock area. If you're driving down the interstate from 581 towards Salem, you'll see three big white crosses there on the right, right before Exit 141. That's where we're located. I think Pastor Eddie Crabtree has been here before, I believe, and prayed. And so, we're a non-denominational ministry, and we just believe the Word of God and stand on it. So, that's a little bit about us. We have probably about 70 members right now. And I lead, along with my wife, lead praise and worship at our church and are involved in other things as well, children's ministry and pretty much the whole ministry.
Let's see.
All right. Father Dodd, we come to you today in the name of Jesus, and we thank you, Lord, for this first meeting of the year, Lord, and we just invoke your presence today, Lord, to enter into this meeting, to give wisdom, to give guidance, to give direction. Lord, in your word instructs us to pray for leaders. And so, we do that today specifically for the Rona County Board of Supervisors, Lord. We pray for the chairman, we pray for the supervisors, we pray for the planners, we pray for the advisors, we pray for those who enact the plans, Lord, who are workers. And so, Father, we just lift those people up to you today and the representation of this county, Lord, today. We thank you, Lord, for your word today, Lord. Your word is truth, and so, we just want to rely on your word, and we just want to bless and praise you for this meeting. Again, we pray for wisdom, Lord, for the coming year, and to just be, go forward and move forward in a new direction, and we just bless and praise you in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said?
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of a board meeting shall be voluntary, offering by a private citizen to and for the benefit of the board. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the board and do not necessarily represent the religious beliefs or views of the board in part or in whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of this board. The board is now returning to open session. The Board of Supervisors held its annual organizational meeting earlier today at 2:00 in this board meeting room prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting, and all board members are present. Next item on our agenda is Item B, the request to postpone or change the order of agenda items. Does anybody want to change anything? Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubin?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Item C1, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. C1 is a resolution congratulating the Glenver High School volleyball team for winning Virginia High School League Class II championship. Let me go down to the podium, let me ask Ms. Hooker to join me, and the team, please come forward.
Ms. Hooker, would you please introduce the team members and the coach? It is definitely my pleasure to welcome the Glenver High School volleyball team here today. We are so proud of you. Thank you for making the effort to be here. We have coaches Jen and Mark Rohrbach, and I know that we all love them, and they are great with what they do, and just have had so many success under their belt. So, thank you for being here. Athletic Director Jason Murray is also here from Glenver High School. Would you like to say a few words? You can come up to that microphone.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Glenver High School, we would like to thank the Rona County Board of Supervisors for having our state champion volleyball team here today. We're super proud of these amazing athletes and their hard work, dedication, and accomplishments. I would like to introduce our head coach and assistant coach, Mark and Jen, to come up and say a few words about these ladies.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to, once again, as Mr. Murray said, thank you all for having us this afternoon. And Mr. Murray just asked me to share a couple of brief things about some highlights of our season with you. So, the first and most important highlight of the season is we had an absolute blast coaching these Glenver and Rona County athletes this season after a very strange spring season, which ended a little bit disappointing. We ended up going 12-1 and losing by two points in the fifth set to the team that ended up winning the state in the spring. We asked a lot of the girls coming into the fall season, and we knew that if we pushed each other and just got everything possibly out of them, that we could do it this year. And they proved us all correct. Just played a fantastic season, lost a couple early sets, early matches to some incredible teams, which put us on the road for the playoffs. And the girls responded to that adversity by going and on the road for multiple matches in a row, and only dropped one set in the entire state championship tournament, entire playoffs, excuse me, and ended up winning the state championship in three straight sets. And we're fortunate enough to play at the Salem Civic Center with a fantastic crowd. So, I want to thank you all and for your support of Glenver specifically and our volleyball program, and just want to, once again, say what a fantastic job the ladies did this season, and congratulate them once again on an unbelievable performance at the biggest stages of the game. Thank you very much.
Please introduce your team members.
Okay. So, this is our middle hitter, Sidney Loader, and our other middle hitter, Ryan Harris. This is one of our outside hitters, Claire Griffith, one of our setters, Audrey Connor. This is our right side, left-handed hitter, Natalie McMahon, one of our defensive specialists, Mari Swanson, another defensive specialist, Farren Wilson, our only senior on the team and an outside hitter, Bailey Connor. This is our third middle hitter, who did a great job stepping in for Ryan when she broke her arm at Floyd, stepped in and did a great job in helping us finish off the season, Daisy Ann Doyott. And this is one of our other setters, Cara Butler. Outside hitter who transitioned into a different role as our libero, which is the main defensive specialist on the team, once the injury occurred, and her name is Hannah Hilton. And this is one of our sophomore outside hitters, Jamie Forster. Our two outstanding managers, this is future volleyball star and amazing manager, Emily Rohrbach, and this guy likes every sport you can possibly imagine, and his name is Luke Rohrbach, and of course, my awesome assistant coach, Jen Rohrbach. So, once again, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Let's see. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the draft resolution, and then after that, we'll get a motion, and a second, and a vote.
All right, as long as my voice holds out. Resolution congratulating the Glenver High School Girls volleyball team for winning the Virginia High School League Class II championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and integral part of the team curriculum at schools in Rona County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas on November 20, 2021, the Glenver High School Girls volleyball team won the Class II Team State Championship at the Salem Civic Center, the Highlanders outscored Central Woodstock with a 25-16, 25-20, and 24-14. And whereas the Highlanders' only senior, Bailey Connor, was a deadly weapon all over the Salem Civic Center floor, inspiring her teammates and terrorizing their opponent, enabling Glenver to win its second state championship. And whereas the overall skill and versatility of its team, as well as its overall athletic ability, was highly impressive. And whereas Bailey Connor, Claire Griffith, and Hannah Hilton received the first Team All-State Award, and whereas the team represented their school and community with great character, poise, and sportsmanship, they are a true asset to Rona County. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rona County, Virginia, thus hereby extends its sincere congratulations to the members of the Glenver High School Girls volleyball team. Senior Bailey Connor, Junior Sidney Loader, Ryan Harris, Farren Wilson, Hannah Hilton, Cara Butler, Claire Griffith, sophomores Audrey Connor, Daisy Ann Donut, Natalie McMahon, Jamie Forster, and freshman Sophie Nicely, Olivia Faubert, and Mary Swanson. The managers are Hannah Pennwell, Emily Rohrbach, and Luke Rohrbach, and are coached by head coach Mark Rohrbach and assistant coach Jen Rohrbach. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team and coaches and the school in their future endeavors.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Coach, it looks like you're going to have a strong team next year, too.
It's going to have some fun.
Absolutely.
Let's see, how do we want to do pictures?
Round the sheet.
Yeah, in the back.
Okay. All people like you in the back.
Okay.
Ladies, why don't you take your masks off?
Any cute.
The fun part of this is I'm going to have to shoot kind of a leak, so if you can't see, but I can't see you in pictures.
Can I help you, sir? You've got to put him in the picture. Okay. It's all right, I'm here. Although you might not want to be close till after I get rid of this crowd. See, I told you they were all taller than me.
My kid's taller than me.
Even the little kid.
Smile, please. One more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your good job.
Congratulations.
Look forward to next year.
Yeah, Mom's going to see me?
I'm just one.
Their father watched play.
Oh, yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you next year.
That's right. That was part of the honor. Appreciate you. Thanks for helping everybody with your checks.
You are very welcome.
Any further comments on this item, board members? I think this is amazing opportunity and a great, successful opportunity for all these young athletes. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, Mr. Mahoney, I just told the coach and the girls, congratulations, and look forward to seeing you next year, minus one senior. So, other than that, great job.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution recognition of a long-serving county employee, Ramona Kern. She is retiring and leaving us. Mr. Hunter is coming up. Kern?
Hello.
I just bring the crutch to you, old guy.
Come on. We know who you are.
Where you want to be? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, these are always bittersweet moments to me to, I'm losing one of my best business system analysts. The county is saying farewell to a 40-plus-year employee. But, on the other hand, you're happy for her to go on to the next chapter of your life. And Ramona, I'll tell you that many of your contemporaries from the sheriff and police, and of course, ComIT, wanted to be here today, but I ask that they watch from afar, either on TV or online, just out of the abundance of caution. But, so I'll turn the floor over to you. You have a few things you would like to say?
Good. I didn't know I was supposed to. I'd like to just thank Rona County for the opportunity to have worked here for 40 years. When I was 16, I knew I wanted to work for Rona County. So, it's been a lifelong journey. I've been blessed. I worked with the sheriff's office. We merged and formed the police department, had my career there for 30 years, and then very fortunate that I got to work in ComIT for the last seven years. Through working with ComIT, I got to work with other agencies that I hadn't gotten to work through directly. I got to go back with the sheriff's office, work projects with them, work with the Rona County Circuit Court, and more one-on-one with the fire department. And it's just, it's been a very good 40 years. It's been a blessing. I've learned a lot, and I've enjoyed it.
We have a draft resolution in our agenda, and I would ask the clerk to read the draft resolution, and then after that, I would welcome a motion by the board.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rona County to Ramona Kern, Business Systems Analyst 2, upon her retirement after more than 40 years of service. Whereas Ramona Kern was employed by Rona County on December 1, 1980, and again on October 6, 1984. And whereas Ms. Kern retired on January 1, 2022, after 40 years and four months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Rona County. And whereas Ms. Kern has served as a deputy sheriff, corrections dispatcher, communications officer, lead communications officer, police record supervisor, cram analyst, systems technician, business analyst, and business systems analyst 1 and 2. And whereas Ms. Kern, through her employment with Rona County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Rona County. And whereas throughout Ms. Kern's tenure with Rona County, she dedicated her career to public safety. Ramona was always willing to help out in any way she could, providing support for various departments, creating custom reports, resolving system issues, or working with vendors. Ramona will be missed in application services, and we all wish her the best in the next chapter of her life. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rona County expresses its deepest appreciation and appreciation of the citizens of Rona County to Ramona Kern for more than 40 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Rona County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement. Thank you.
I'd welcome a motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Any comments from any board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to congratulate you on 40-plus years in any position, or any, within the agency. That's something you don't hear about anymore.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate your dedication to Rona County, for all the services you've provided through the years, and I do hope that you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you very much.
And I will echo Mr. Peters' sentiment. We just so appreciate your longevity and all the service that you have provided to the citizens of Rona County, and we deeply appreciate it. Now, on to your next adventure, and good luck and best wishes.
Thank you.
And just a comment or two here. First of all, screen all your phone calls after your last day, because they'll probably be calling you, asking where this was or that was. But, congratulations on your long career. You beat me by one year in the career I had before I joined the board. So, have fun with the free time and do all the things you always wanted to do but couldn't do because you were working.
Thank you.
And Ramona, I too echo comments from the previous board members. It's absolutely fascinating to find somebody to work for a company or government for 40 years. It's just unheard of. And the fact that you were able to go in and out of different departments and help, what a great spirit of heart to help out wherever you needed to, and that will serve you well after this job and on to your next chapter. But, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Ramona, I just think the longevity and loyalty to the citizens of Rona County is very moving, and it's tremendous. And I wish we'd have more people like you. And I'm sorry you're leaving.
Thank you.
Shall we take some pictures?
She's already got it. Yeah, she had it at her retirement party.
If your people would read your board of boards, you would already have it.
I know. You don't, you're not telling me nothing on this party.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's trying to prepare before the first one complains that they've got a monument on their table.
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to write thank you letters to the judge. Just kidding, just kidding. I'll wear it for a couple of years.
Huh? I, I just reordered them, and then somebody said, oh, look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye. Congratulations.
regarding proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2, 2507. Ms. Gerhart, Director of Finance, Management Services.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comments amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $54,90,221.27, which represents $1,845,871 to the Rona County Public Schools General Fund, and $52,244,350.27 for their other funds. Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, provides that whenever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. This notice was published on January 4, 2022. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments.
I would like to open the public hearing. I do not have any speakers signed up.
No, sir, I have none for this public hearing.
With that, I guess I'll close the public hearing. Next item. Item E1 is first reading of ordinances. Item E1 is an emergency ordinance appropriating $52,244,350.27 from Rona County Public Schools' fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021. Other year-end funds to the fiscal year 2021-2022 Rona County Public Schools budget, other funds. It has been requested, upon a four-fifth's vote of the board, that the second reading would be waived and that the ordinance would be adopted as an emergency measure. Any questions from any board members? Ms. Peterson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, distinguished supervisors. This is part two of our presentation to request an ordinance for the carryover of the June 30, 2021 balances. Per the school division's year-end policy and the county's comprehensive financial policy, I presented the general fund carryover on December 14, 2021. Today, I am presenting the remainder of the funds. A full report is included in the board packet. These 14 other funds segregate our resources either because they are long-term in nature or required by law, or they are used for internal services. Their balances have historically been carried over each year. The total of these funds is $52,244,350.27. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you.
Thank you.
You can answer any questions.
No questions?
Questions. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt Item E1.
Second.
Is that?
With a four-fifth's vote to waive the second reading.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item F1 is second reading of ordinances. Item F1 is an ordinance amending the Rona County Public Schools budget and appropriating $1,845,871 to the Schools General Fund. Ms. Peterson?
There have been no changes to this request.
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? If not, I would welcome a motion.
Motion to approve F1.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item G. Item G is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not yet been submitted to the clerk? Item H on our agenda, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove any of the items on the Consent Agenda? Is that?
With a four-fifths vote to waive the second reading.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item F1 is second reading of ordinances. Item F1 is an ordinance amending the Roanoke County Public Schools budget and appropriating one million, eight hundred and forty-five, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars to the Schools General Fund. Ms. Peterson?
There have been no changes to this request.
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? If not, I would welcome a motion.
Motion to approve F1?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item G. Item G is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not yet been submitted to the clerk? Item H on our agenda, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove any of the items on the Consent Agenda? If not, I would welcome a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is Item I, Citizen Comments and Communications. I have one item. Charles Wordelick would like to speak to us about real estate assessments. Mr. Wordelick?
Good afternoon.
Sir, we have three minutes. I think you have our, you're familiar with our light system?
I do.
Please give us your name and your address.
I'm Charles Wordelick, 2317 Bloomfield Avenue in the Summerfield subdivision of Roanoke County. Just want to mention, the cane is not here for sympathy reasons. Just a little bit of support. Well, along with the Happy New Year's greetings, which were very nice, there was a nice, has been a nice increase in social security payments, a nice increase in my naval reserve pension due to the increase in, in the cost of living. But along with those good news items, there was this other thing that I got in the mail last week about the notice of real estate assessment, and it looks like there's quite an increase of what I owe this, this year in real estate taxes. And I'd like to mention that the, you know, everybody knows about the big increase in home values, and it's been very unusual really to have this very large increase. And it has really resulted in a ballooning of the value upon which the tax rate is applied. And I'd just like to mention that I think the rate, not, maybe not the rate, but the valuation should be adjusted to realize this ballooning of the values, because it kind of distorts the way the taxes come out in the end. So I'll avail myself of the avenues available to appeal this, but I just think that this, this needs to be looked into a little bit more. And I thank you very much for your attention to this.
Thank you, sir. I know many of us, many of the board members have received calls and emails and letters similar to what you're expressing, sir, and so I think we will be looking at that fairly closely as we go through our budget process this spring. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have no other comments submitted. Clerk doesn't have any more?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item J, Reports. I would ask for a motion to receive and file the reports listed on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to file the reports under Item J.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Peters. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Me first?
No. You're last. We save the best for last.
You never said it to me.
I said, you just didn't hear me?
I gather, Ms. Hooker?
I just have one quick thing to say. It was really a pleasure to have the Glenver High School volleyball team here in Forest today. What a lovely group, great coaches and just outstanding individuals. And I just wanted to also make mention of attending the graduation of our Law Enforcement Academy last, what was that? Was that Friday? Last Friday? Rebecca and Richard were there also, and we had five graduates, and it was a great, a great event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. North?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, congratulations to Supervisor Mahoney, now Chairman Mahoney for this year. Look forward to working with you. And no good deed goes unpunished, as they say. Also, I just want to remind folks that there will be a meeting this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Bonsec Elementary School concerning the 460 corridor. I understand there's been some people wanting to know why the meeting wasn't longer. I honestly don't have an answer to that, but I will tell you this. Whether you come or whether you can't make it, you should go on to the Roanoke County website and complete the survey that's out there, because that input is important as well. As a matter of fact, I'm going to do the same later on tomorrow after I finish another meeting. In any instance, look forward to that event, see what folks have to say about that busy corridor, which is probably the second largest or busiest corridor in the Roanoke Valley. Thank you very much.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mahoney. And I too want to echo my congratulations. Look forward to you steering the boat and us, us five this year. And I'm glad it's you and not me. I do want to make a comment about the assessed values. I want to give a little bit of a history lesson, because I was in the middle of the worst recession our country has ever occurred besides the depression. So in 2008, our high point for all our real estate valuation peaked in 2008. We had the housing bust. We had a lot of financial crisis in our economy, and it absolutely wrecked house values. It wrecked daily lives of people, jobs. It was a total disaster. And it continued until it bottomed finally about 2016, 2017. And then our, our values and our real estate assessments started to climb back up. And so for the first time this year with our real estate assessment, my house value is the same. It's finally got up to that point to where it was in 2008. That's fourteen years. That's how much of a scar that was left with this recession, and we are just now back up to that point. Now, the citizen asked, good question, why are the house values so high? I'll tell you why. I'm in that industry. And it is high because from '08 to 2017, we didn't build any spec houses. Nobody would loan us money. The inventories were absolutely low. So when the millennials decided to start buying houses four or five years ago, there went our existing stock. So we finally started getting back into the business of building houses around 2017. And we are playing catch-up now, today. I usually build three to four houses a year. We're building eight to ten houses right now. We're taking calls at least a couple a week from people wanting a house, buy, have a house built, because the existing inventory is low. And it's like used cars. We saw a big influx with our values for our used cars where the, they went way up. So we're seeing the repeat with our houses right now. You know, I consider that a good thing, not a bad thing, because we want our, our values to continue up. Our house is, is our most important asset in our portfolio, and we want it to continue to appreciate. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add a little bit of insight to, to what I saw with the assessments and where they are. And I got hit with an eight percent increase myself.
Thank you. I'm last up. I want to thank the board for its confidence in me to think that I could be a decent chairman. So I thank the board that you think that highly of me that you'll put me into the middle of the box. Appreciate it. Let me make a few comments about where we are. We are heading into year three of this pandemic, the Omicron pandemic. I really thought and hoped that this would all be behind us when the medicines and the vaccines and the whatever else came out, but it seems to be sticking with us. And so that clearly will have a significant impact on our ability to deliver critical, needed public services to our citizens. But I'm also optimistic that we'll work through it and we'll work through it successfully. We have a couple tough issues facing us immediately. I think we have, we're going to have a very difficult budget. We've seen the inflation numbers, 6.8%, 6.2% the last several months. That obviously has a significant impact on what we do in terms of our budget, in terms of what the school board has to do with its budget, because a lot of our budget is personnel. That's how we deliver services to people. We've tried to take steps to address salaries of our police, our sheriffs, firefighters, all of our employees. We began a process to do that. We had a salary survey, and I'm afraid that that salary survey probably isn't relevant very much anymore, because inflation has exploded beyond that. And it's not just salaries. It's the stuff we buy. It's goods and services, and we're going to see that throughout our entire budget. We're going to have to be very responsible and judicious with respect to the ARPA money. We have a flood of federal dollars, which is feeding inflation, but at the same time, we do have this one-time benefit. We're going to address broadband. We're going to address water and sewer expansion issues. We're going to address stormwater. We're going to buy fire engines, ambulances, and garbage trucks. And people may laugh and wonder, how does a garbage truck fit into public safety? Well, let's not pick up garbage for a couple weeks, and let's see what that's going to be like. I think one big issue we have on our agenda, which we will talk about, begin talking about a little bit this afternoon with the school board and the Citizens Committee, is what to do for career and technical education. And that is something that should have been addressed 22, 24 years ago. It wasn't. It's been delayed and delayed and deferred. But that, in my opinion, is critical, not only for public education, but also for economic development. If we don't have a skilled, trained workforce, it'll be impossible to encourage businesses to locate here. It'll be impossible to have our existing businesses expand. And I think I read someplace, Roanoke Valley's, Roanoke County's unemployment was 2.2%. I don't know where you find the workers, but at least if we have a career and technical education program, we'll, we'll get some workers there. I want to thank Mr. Peters. I know he's had a tough year, but his leadership has been excellent. And if you remember his speech at the State of the County, he outlined all of the things we've accomplished. And I know we will, working together, will accomplish a lot of good things in 2022. I went back and I looked, before the pandemic began, if you remember, I think it was in February 1, 2020, we had a retreat where we listed the goals and objectives of what we wanted to accomplish in Roanoke County. And I think we've accomplished many of them. We focused on the building and development permit review process that Mr. Radford's talked a lot about. We've done that. Solid waste transportation with RVRA concerned Mrs. Hooker and all of us. We've accomplished that. We looked at employee engagement and compensation, new pay plan. We accomplished that. I may be a little bit behind now, but we accomplished it. We directed our staff to put together an economic development strategic plan. We've done that. We directed staff to work on our comp plan and our zoning ordinance amendments. We're working on that. We haven't achieved it, but we've come close. And I think finally, we also directed staff, we've given a lot of work to our staff, but a multi-year operating budget to have a better forecast, economic forecasting process. And we're in the middle of that. And so I, I think we've, we've accomplished a lot of our goals. We have an excellent staff. I know they've been highly stressed over the past couple of years, and so I appreciate them for all their hard work. But I also want to indicate that, you know, it's easy to criticize government, but if you look back in terms of what we said we were going to do, I think we've done that. And I truly believe that we'll accomplish the same thing this year. With that, our next item on the agenda is Work Sessions. We have two work sessions. First work session is going to review the 2023 to 2032 Capital Improvement Program, and that will be held on the third floor training room. And then we're going to come back down here for a joint work session with the Roanoke County School Board and the Career and Technical Advisory Committee. That is supposed to be at 5 o'clock. Mr. Lubek, should we move and have the appropriate resolution for moving into closed session here, or should we do that, or do we wait till 5 o'clock when everybody is here?
And Chairman Mahoney, I think you can do it either way. I think it would be fine to do it now and then simply invite the school board and the CTE committee to do the same thing at the time that they go into closed session. Either, either process would work.
Pleasure of the board. Let's, let's do our closed session motion now, and then at least we get that out of the way, and then we can have the school board and the committee do theirs. With that, I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A3. This is to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Specifically, the board will consider the acquisition of potential properties throughout the county for school purposes. I made a motion. I would request a second.
Second.
I have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. We will now recess. We'll go to the third floor for the first work session, and we'll come back down here at 5 o'clock for the joint meeting with the school board and the CTE committee.